This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, good evening.
Good evening.
I have the honor and privilege of introducing a new police officer here in our Kansas City. Adam Utz began employment with the Arkansas City Police Department on November 2nd. Adam successfully completed all phases of the hiring process to include interview boards, intense hiring, background investigation, polygraph tests, psychological tests, online personality tests, physical capacity test, drug and alcohol screening, and medical exam. So, needless to say, he's here for a good reason. He regularly works at Walmart in our Kansas City since 2018. He has experience in the law enforcement field by working as a detention deputy at both the Ford County Jail and Cedric County jails. He is projected to attend the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center in January of 2022. During the hiring process, I asked Adam why he wanted to be a police officer here in our Kansas City. He told me that he has come to know and respect the officers of this department and through his work at Walmart. He went on to say that the department does amazing things in the county. We are truly excited to have Adam and his family join our family here at the police department. At this time, I would ask the city clerk to administer the oath of honor to Officer Utz.
Please bring your raise around. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
For the public trust.
For the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others accountable.
Hold myself and others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Kansas.
And the state of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve. And the agency I serve.
The agency I serve.
Congratulations.
Sorry.
And good luck after all that he put you through.
It's all right. Congrats, Adam. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Bring it down.
Out of 500.
Next up, we will comments from the items, from the audience for items not on the agenda. We have Millie Palmer, 8:15 West Linden. Can come on up.
Millie Palmer?
Millie, yeah.
Yes, I came in place of my person for my daughter Condi Palmer, who is in arrears on her city ladder. And I kept protesting some of the churches with refuge pickers. Because she was really challenged. She took the trash to the city with the county landfill all this time, and she got this bill. She's in arrears there. And I would like to see the city not have to charge it. It's already been sent over to the county clerk. They put on her taxes, the bill that's in arrears there. And she also was charged for the sewer all that time at 40 cents a gallon with the sewer water instead of 20. That's $931 more than what she should have been charged because a single person doesn't use 40 gallons of water. She was charged. I get charged for 40, but she, I only get charged for 20. She gets charged for 40. There's just one person here, two of us. So, I'm asking that the $931 being taken off of sewer, charged too.
So, what, the total, what was the total, was it 4,000?
4,700.
Roughly $4,700.
Yeah.
And the trash amount that you want taken off is how much?
1,000.
And is that amount the total, do, is that, how do I say this? Is that the total amount that is like a minimum trash? No matter you use it or not, that's just, if you get a trash can, you pay that as a citizen of the community, whether you use it or not? And there were, there were no late fees with that trash? That was just the minimum?
1844.
1844 a month for every citizen that has a resident in their name, so to speak? That gets a trash can, alright?
Yeah, on the sewer water.
A wa, a trash container at her house?
She turned it back in because she was hauling it to the city land.
Was you able to educate her on its use?
I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this until just recently. I was not aware.
So, how long has this thing been going on, Mr.?
Eighty-seven months.
Eighty-seven.
I don't know when she got her first bill or the past due for 40,000 seconds. I don't know when she got the first bill. All I know is, he wasn't going to pay it because she wasn't using it.
How did the, what is a 40, I don't know, Jennifer can answer this. What's a 40 cent versus the 20 cent?
So, she has bill for 4,000 gallons. That's our city average. How we do that is based on an average of January, February, March of every year. She doesn't have water service because she's on a well. So, we have no way of knowing how much sewage that she has. And so, we put her in at the city. She's requesting for it to be moved down to 20, which would be the.
Does she have her own septic system?
Does not, she's on city sewer, but she's on well water.
Does she live in the city limits?
Yes.
Yes. What took so long for her to say something?
I don't, I don't really.
Is she employed?
She's disabled.
Physically?
Physically.
Well, she's physically disabled, why would she take her trash to the landfill?
Because she, that's what she thought she was supposed to do.
And did she ask anybody at the city what she was supposed to do? You don't think so?
Does she lift her off her line? Does she lift her off her line?
Yes.
Did she ever receive letters or note of, I mean, before all this, was she aware of the letters and notification? Not just, not just the bill or your water bill you get, but was, were there letters and outside of just the bill sent?
We had city staff, and Mike Bellis isn't here.
Yeah. Kind of, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, go out and speak to her because she also did not feel that she was on city sewer. She thought she had a septic tank. And so, we did a diet test, and we've been throughout that.
But she refused to do that prior to that, didn't she?
And she refused to put it on her property.
But she got it done.
We got that taken care of.
It did prove that she is on city sewer. So, we need to get that taken care of.
Need to, need to get what taken care of?
Pay the sewer bill, she said.
I'm asking you to take off the amount of refuge.
The trash.
And $931 off the sewer because she was charged 40 cents on that all along instead of 20.
How much is the sewer? 18, 40, 40? No, it's, it's, it's like 30 some dollars, right?
Well, yeah. The 4,700 minus roughly the 1,700, roughly, we're kind of off 30, 40 bucks. It's, it's 4,700 bucks. The trash is roughly 1,700 bucks. There's 3,000, roughly $3,000 approximately sitting there. Of that 3,000, she'd want another 950 or so taken off. Well, it's the refuge, I mean, it's.
My feeling is this, I'm just talking out loud, is that, that the trash should be, be kind of hard to take the trash off because if we do that to you, then we're going to have other people that are going to do the same thing. You know, they don't want the trash, and I don't know how we're going to be able to, you know, do that. But as far as the $900, like from 20 to 40, I think that we should probably make the adjustment there, you know, for a single person there, you know? I mean, we just estimated the water part of it and maybe take the $900 off to help, you know, on that part of it. But I'm just talking out loud, you know?
I'm still begging you trash off because she didn't pay it first. She wasn't aware.
And.
Mentally, mentally challenged, and it was very difficult.
Because it's.
And I, I agree with, I, I, I understand what, I completely understand what you're saying on that. And I also see what Commissioner Warren's saying because if we start saying you didn't use it. Well, I mean, you're going to have somebody to say, I'm not paying my trash bill because I don't use your trash service. I just take it to the landfill. How we know whether you're not without having to take photos or get the trashman to say today? You know, it just becomes, you open a can for the possibility of people to say, well, I don't use the trash either, so don't put it on my bill, I'm not paying. You just run, that's the risk you run when you open this door. Although your situation and your circumstances are different, people will take advantage of what we decide here tonight. I mean, it's just the nature, someone will not follow the rules and be honest and say, well, I don't use it, so don't charge me. Well, we're going to have to start taking photos, or we're going to have to start having the trashman check each address that has, you know, trash outside, and that's, they can't, that's too, the city employees shouldn't have to, they work enough. They work in enough conditions out there, so.
I haven't had a neighbor since passed. Every week, he put his trash in the trunk of his car and hauled it somewhere. Now, I don't know how he got by not having it done because I had, I paid for mine, but I would never have said anything to anybody about it.
He was probably still getting charged, or, I mean, he should if he had a trash can.
Why he shouldn't do it?
Yeah. I think that's just, that's what I think Commissioner Warren's trying to say too, is it's hard to start opening that door a little bit with the trash because it, it
Get wider.
It could get.
Lots of people.
It could become an issue.
Well, I'll tell you what, I, this, to tell you one step further, is that maybe we take a little bit more off on the, the, the.
Water sewer.
Sewer part of it to help, maybe on the trash part, we can, I don't still think we do this trash thing, you know? But maybe we said $900, maybe we take, I don't know.
Well, city manager, isn't there an ordinance that says trash services are automatic inside the city limits?
Yeah, it's all part of that, yeah.
But still, she has, she has burgers?
She, she has, she's been, she's been very slow all her life, but she has lupus and she's on lots of medicine. She has lots, and she's had back surgery twice. She's had a knee replaced.
Does she have a caregiver, didn't?
No.
No.
Does she live close to you?
I live on one.
And were there, were there late, late fees assessed to that? I assume there were some late fees put on there?
How much was that, 300 or 250?
210?
210.
I mean, I don't, if you take, drop that from 40 to 20 and take the late fees off.
Yeah.
And that's.
That's getting pretty close to.
That's a little, at least take those, the late fees off and then and drop that from 40 to, to 20, but that trash, I agree, I don't know if we can do the trash. And I, it's a different situation, I understand, but I just know there will be some that say, well, I'm not going to use the trash either, don't make me pay.
That's true.
Somebody called me back several years ago, says, I'm not paying the trash. I said, you've got to pay the trash if you live in the city. He says, but I take it to my employer. I said, I'm sorry, you have to pay the trash, that's, that's.
But.
So.
I didn't know that you had to, had to be on. I wasn't aware of that at all until this came back. And I do it for my own convenience.
I think it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's inside the city limits unless you're grandfathered in, you have to have sewer, water, and trash. And you all automatically pay for stormwater. Correct? So, I understand your predicament because you're trying to figure out how to solve a problem for her. Did you contact any agencies for help?
No.
Okay. Are there any agencies available that would help her?
There's always been churches and organizations that have helped people in the past.
I was just trying to do that, calculate, I've got the calculator on my phone there. I think just to see what you were saying and with the, I mean, yeah, if you dropped that from 40 to 20, figured out what that would be and waived the, and I don't know how many gallons you put on that, but waive the late fees. I think that's.
Yeah, pretty, pretty well, since, off since the trash.
Off, pretty, pretty close to trash.
Only from you guys, the dollar amount because it's all been written up here and sitting on the back of the county.
Well, then you said the 900, she wanted 900, so plus the 210, or 2 plus, 200 plus in late fees.
210, yeah.
So, 1,100, roughly 1,100 off would put that at roughly 3,600 bucks.
Larry, what's the process if we take some of this off? What do we have to do, tell them?
It's already been assessed to the properties.
That's just a phone call, I have them.
Right, you have to notify them to take a certain amount off.
Well, I think it's opening a bucket of worms that the city doesn't need. I'm sorry that it's happened to her. I mean, she didn't know she's getting, having to pay this for how long? I mean, if, if she paid it, I mean, was it coming out of her?
I'm going to write a check today, pay for the balance, to get it off her taxes.
So, we're actually helping you? He's not aware, she's not aware of your request?
No, she does not have the money. She's got thousands of dollars in doctor bills. I'm going to text here, my parents work here.
I understand, we all.
I understand.
We all have that. I'm just trying to.
How much I have to pay.
What do you guys think, I'm, I mean?
No, I understand.
I, yeah, we get it, we're not.
Seven years? She was not aware that?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's kind of, yeah, I mean, that's side point. I think we just got to figure something out that's.
Well, I just want to make sure that's not going to happen again. Is there someone that's going to?
Integrity of the trash in place.
She's paid it the last two months up here in the office. Isn't that right?
Yes.
How's she get up here?
Well, I, I mean, let's just, let's solve, let's get to the point of what's the, the issue here, which is.
I'd say. I'm just talking out loud, I'd say, you know, $3,500 total, and just, you know, call it, call it that.
I'm fine with 3,500.
I mean, that's, that helps you on the trash, but we can't take the trash off, you know, we're trying.
You got to keep the integrity of that in place, or it's going to open the can. I think that's the key, is keep the integrity of the trash in place. I, yeah, I'd make a motion that we change that for Palmer's, the value that was assessed to the, to this county from 4,728.91 to 3,500.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, motion made, second, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
I abstain.
Anywhere.
Well, I mean, I, I still have it, the 931, what is that?
She's wanting to go from 40 cent, from the 40, the gallon, the 40 gallons to 20 gallons. And that would be about the ninth of that.
And then the late fees.
And I've got that like 3,600, and he just said 3,500. And I was, I think that's, in my opinion, that was my.
Round off number?
Yes.
Sure.
The motion was made, and the motion was seconded. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
3-2, it passes. Next up, on the agenda will be the consent agenda, I believe.
Make a motion that we approve the consent. Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, can we pull three, or, I don't know, want to discuss that or not?
Not really.
Okay.
No.
Do you want to?
I think it's okay. You're going to, you're going to move to approve the consent agenda?
There were some discussions had on that property at Fifth and Washington, the Cali County Community College. That Canyon had some people ask to her about it, but it's up to if you want to pull it or not, if you want it or not.
I mean, if nobody else wants to, then we won't, but.
I mean, there's the same taxing entity as Cali County as our Kansas City.
They'll be taking care of it.
So.
So. That's born on there. So.
Much more convenient.
So, motions, so the consent agenda is amended. Authorizing the city to execute a gap waiver for 2022 fiscal year. The last one is that, are we going to take number three off the consent agenda?
No.
No.
Saying none, motion had been made by Canyon to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next up, new business.
We've got a resolution authorizing the city to amend the employment agreement with Randy Frazier regarding the term and length of employees, of the employee service as city manager and to provide for a cost of living adjustment.
So, move.
Do it that way?
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
It's second.
Renew this contract, so I don't think there's any issues with that.
No.
I think he's done a great job. So, I, I was, motion been made, and I think seconded by everyone, so all those in favor of authorizing the city to amend the employment agreement with Randy Frazier regarding the term and the length of employee service as city manager and to provide for a cost of living adjustment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next up.
We've got a resolution approving the notice of budget hearing for publication and setting the date for a public hearing at 5:30 PM, December 7th, 2021, to amend the 2021 budget for the city of Arkansas.
So, it's not, we just need to update the public hearing to have it on here September 7th.
That's all you need, I move that we approve the notice of budget hearing for publication, setting the date for a public hearing, 5:30 PM, December 7th, 2021, to amend the 2021 budget for the city of our Kansas City.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor, it is a voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next up on the agenda.
We've got a resolution approving a contract with Judy Dahmer, consultant with Freedom Claims Management Incorporated, to provide services as a limited agent for the city's health insurance business.
Individuals I've talked to about this, Judy, that she's an excellent consultant for Freedom Claims, and she has encountered cities that were hesitant to think about changing their healthcare. But I believe if we were to let her come in for a year and help work with our employees to better educate them to what it involves, we might have a better consensus among them.
And she's offering other services along with that, so even with our, our renewals next year, helping with the Cobra administration and, and things like that. So, there's quite a few, you know, things that she would do to help, take some of the burden off of, off of staff now. Plus, you know, just the, watching for the health trends and things that go on in our healthcare system and just.
Familiarity with an individual that has helped them, well, helped us.
Okay.
So, I so move.
Motion has been made to.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor to approve a resolution, do you want any more discussion?
Well, I mean, I just, if we, I guess I need to understand a little more about what she's saying. So, she's going to, so we're going to continue with the plan we have over here, not going to do anything. And then she's going to look at it to say, I could have saved your money here, or she, or this other thing works over here.
Yeah, so she'll monitor our, our claims and stuff this year. And, and then she'll help us look for ways to save money, but along with that, she's going to kind of run a a MERC right alongside ours, just.
I don't know what that is.
The, the, the plan that they run, the Freedom Claims Plan.
Just to see.
Yeah, so that way we have a comparison of, of if we were, had been on the Freedom Claims coverage this year, kind of get an idea of how it would have performed versus what we have traditionally done with the traditional interns.
Okay.
So, that's, that's kind of the, the big ticket item, and then plus the other things that.
This is on top of what we're paying premiums? What we talked about it before is, if we hired her, we'd still pay the same amount between her and Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Well, yeah, this, that, that would be if we signed up with her different plans.
Yeah.
No.
But we haven't signed it, we're keeping it.
No, we haven't.
She's just going to analyze it and.
Okay.
And again, she's providing some of the services that we have talked about needing other, outside of this anyway, the Cobra administration and something like that.
So, is that going to take some stress off our, what it is?
Yeah.
Cobra administration is very time intensive, and there are so many other things that I could be working on, and it's, it takes a lot of knowledge, but in actually doing it, it doesn't take a great deal of skill, but it takes a great deal of time. And it's very important that it is done correctly, and it is done in a timely manner because fines can be pretty large for failure to provide appropriate Cobra notifications.
So, does the city have very many Cobra claims, or?
Generally, I, a lot of people go, when they leave, they'll go on insurance with their new employer if they leave for another job. We do, I have a few, but not a lot. We do have a few, but not a lot of retirees as well. And she's going to help us understand all of the, how the calculations will work for the MERC, like on a monthly basis, like Randy said, take reports from Blue Cross, and then put it into her model and see where we would be. It gives us a much greater comfort level. And then we also can educate employees, which is very important. But yeah, Cobra administration and, which also provide a very nice, all encompassing benefits booklet that we can provide to employees that have all the required notices. So, that would be very nice, and it'd be handy for the employees. There's some wellness information and benefit in this plan, in this project as well. And then, of course, the Cobra administration and keeping up on trends and costs. It's just, I think it's going to be very good for us to open our minds on being possibly more creative, but still provide that key core benefits for the employees.
Educating.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, this is not, it wasn't in our budget that we set?
It's not budgeted.
It's not budgeted.
Okay, and do we have the funds to do this?
One of those things, I just gotta find it.
Okay.
We probably ought to have a lot of money, because I hear the taxes are going up. I had somebody call me this morning about the mill levy. He didn't quite understand the mill levy, and I says, our mill levy has been the same for so many years. When the evaluation of property goes up, your taxes go up, and there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, I told him the rest of it, so. So there may be a little bit of money next year.
Motion was made by Commissioner Welch and seconded by Commissioner Warren, made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five oh. Next up on the agenda.
Free life insurance renewal for the twenty twenty two plan year.
Evening, Mr. Mr. We have looked at our benefits package and it's renewal time. And the first one that I wanted to bring forward to tonight is renewal on our life insurance policy that we provide for all full-time employees. It is a ten thousand dollar life insurance policy with an additional ten thousand dollars for dismemberment and and.
Other.
Yeah.
Other things.
Yes, and so, three dollars and eighty cents per month. For each equates to cost nine five thousand dollars a year for the spend of it, a little bit over five percent suggested increase in the cost for twenty twenty two.
What happens when they retire? Do they get their life insurance policy?
They have the option to continue it at their own expense if they would like to.
What about if they don't, will they get the premiums off of it?
No, it is actually a term line.
Okay.
It's a whole life plan, so.
Yeah.
Nobody just need a.
An employee could find this is the same they've had, so it's not new to them, it's, yeah.
Um, I I thought it was rich.
Is all our employees have this or just?
All full-time employees, yes. It has actually been a benefit that's been in effect prior to my coming here in two thousand and five.
Oh, my God.
Yes.
Been there a while, so.
I had it in nineteen sixty nine, so.
Same company. Hey, well, I'll move that we approve the employee life insurance renewal for twenty twenty two plan year.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five oh. Next on the agenda.
Return of the employee health insurance for the twenty twenty two plan year.
Okay, this is our primary benefit provided to employees. It's something we are very excited for and a benefit we are are quite proud to be able to offer to employees. We even are using it and have used it to recruit, especially in these times of difficult, yeah, getting people to work, so it is important to people. We received an increase of approximately fourteen percent, it was thirteen point five for the plan year twenty twenty two. That does not include any changes to the plan. That is an additional around two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars per year.
And this is what Julie will be looking at for this next year and hoping that we can maybe think of a better way, because without doing something different down the road, we're we're gonna tend to get gouged and gouged until there's a point that we're gonna have to do something major, and we don't want to be in that position to be able to do something like that, you know, when it's not to our advantage, what I'm trying to say.
Right, not at a time when our backs against the wall.
Right, I see, exactly right. That's what Randy was talking about.
Be proactive instead of reactive.
Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion, approve the employee's health insurance for two thousand twenty two plan year.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion?
Well, just say that one of these days, I think the employees are gonna have to pay maybe a couple of dollars more a month. May it may be more, I mean, not a couple, but it's gonna get to a point where the city can't pick up the big increase, you know? Two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars is a lot of. Yeah, hope so.
And we had that in kind of in budget, we knew it was gonna be an increase, didn't we? I mean.
Budget for fifteen percent.
Okay, so we're all right for that, okay?
In a time when it's hard to find good employees and hire good employees, this is a very big incentive to get people to work for your business, or in this case, a city. It's very, it's an, it's a good thing to have in hiring, so, yeah.
I hope you have a lot of comparisons to other insurance companies.
I leave.
Yes, and we, I'll just digress for just a moment. We're working on a benefits or a total compensation type statement for all employees to receive hopefully on an annual basis, so that they can see the true cost of, and their their true value, you know, their their hourly rate, plus the health insurance, plus the papers, plus FICA taxes, those sorts of things, so that they, you know, try to educate them, as you have said, so they really understand how valuable uh, this position.
And this plan.
Yes.
Plans.
I would even contend adding in there if they get uniformed, that part of it too, is they don't have to pay for some of that stuff. Some of them, they do have to pay for some of it on their own, which I understand, but that's still not a benefit, so.
And that's, you know, we we absorbed last year a full, what was that, twenty one? What was the?
I don't remember exactly.
It was, it was a substantial increase.
I'm gonna sell my.
And this is thirteen percent, is that what you said?
Not as high.
Because, but that is because we started looking, they started paying attention and and brought it back down. So I think it's important for everyone to know that we do diligent and searched and really tried to make enough of a way that it made an impact on them, and it brought the insurance down again. And it is a huge benefit, and we've done that two years now without impacting the employees. So.
And I know that they are very, very grateful.
Well, without them, the city couldn't do anything.
Yeah, they're, they're, I say, it's.
We're the ones.
Again, that's where you get good people and you find people, and you have benefits like this to offer.
And no one's allowed to retire, ever.
Ever, yeah, and we have talked to other places, I mean, those deductibles, you can't get them.
Times ticking.
There are the overall rates with other communities, our rates are actually so good, even with the package.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five oh. Next up on the agenda, on new business.
Flexible spending account administration renewals for the twenty twenty two.
Okay, this is, we work with Charancy, which is a part of the Delta Delta team. They do our administration for flexible spending accounts. That's where employees get like a credit card, and they put money aside pre-tax to these costs that are not, or expenses that are not paid for by insurance. Complain with, and say, hey, so, uh, the administration cost is a little over a thousand dollars a year, and they monitor everything to make sure our insurance plans and that everything is covered, and they're not purchasing anything on their part, that that they can't purchase pre-tax, so, uh, for a thousand dollars, they do a lot of work.
And there's no change in the cost?
No change in the cost.
I would enter, I would like to make a motion that we approve the flex spending account administration renewal for the twenty twenty two plan year.
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any more discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marla. Next up, city manager report.
Hey, there is a special appreciation launch for Enviro Service and Public Service Department employees. It's sponsored by Visit Arc City, and that's eleven thirty A M. to one P M. on Thursday, November eighteenth, at the Northwest Community Center. The Chamber of Commerce will be hosting two special events, Thursday, November eighteenth, Summit Realty will host the Business After Hour events from five to seven. And then downtown will have Summit Nights, so they'll have some downtown shopping, that'll be from five to eight P M. Um, there's a special traffic safety committee meeting uh, to discuss the multi-modal transportation master plan, that'll be ten A M. Friday, November nineteenth, over at the water treatment plant. Community Development Black Grant Representatives will be here from nine thirty to ten thirty on November twenty third. Um, that's part of our application for the city Housing Rehabilitation Grant, so they'll be walking in the, uh, the grant area and and reviewing that. Um, the Arkansas City Chamber of Commerce will hold its ceremonial tree lighting from at six P M. Um, that'll be five to seven P M. on Tuesday, November twenty third. And City Hall and other city offices will be closed Thursday, November twenty fifth and twenty sixth for Thanksgiving. And recycling is further filled on the twenty sixth to the twenty seventh. City staff will meet with the project consultants on the C B D G North Summit Resurfacing Project, that'll be next Wednesday, December first, in the AM in my office. Next City Commission study session will be Friday, December third, in my office, and then these the the Arc City Chamber of Commerce will host Christmas in the, on December fourth. And then from ten A M. to four P M. and Center Parade at six P M. in downtown. And then, um, there was a request from one of the commissioners to to look at the banking request for proposal, I laid a copy of that on your guys' table up there.
I'm gonna look at it at the next work, isn't it?
Okay, sounds good. And then, and a couple of K D O that they see one to give, so.
Good news. Good evening. So pursuant to that meeting on December first, we have a lot to discuss, because we were very happy to learn yesterday that we finally been selected as a cost share order subject. That we will receive two hundred and twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars for transportation for the north side of the street project. Combined with the four hundred fifty five thousand dollar C D V G grant that we've already received, that essentially takes care of seventy five percent of the project costs, and we should be able to do a nearly million dollar street project in our busiest corridor and on the. Assuming the bids hold. Um, that opens up some flexibility, so we're gonna try to look at a few things. The plan that we kind of had in place was pretty bare bones. It was kind of the bare minimum for the amount, because we knew if we didn't get this, that we were gonna have to come up with four hundred fifty five thousand dollars. Uh, so I know Jennifer's probably feeling a little easier about the cash flow on this. Obviously, we'll still, there's still quite a bit of our street funding, um, between the gas federal fund exchange dollars that we get, some of the other sources, so we'll still have to be careful about how we budget things, but there's a few small enhancements we might be able to add into the project. We're definitely gonna look strongly at the O Sage Avenue area. Um, don't know if you know, we're looking at right now a scope for a traffic study. In the area Jefferson Elementary School did all the issues we're having there with question and those sorts of things, and so that may bring back some engineering recommendations that might be most efficiently taken care of as part of the project, it just kind of depends. And the other area, I think I talked to you already about the sidewalk project, and how we got so much feedback on the need to look at some safety improvements on radio lane. So I think now we have the opportunity to hopefully, um, once we do bids for the project, and we know who instructor's gonna be, maybe negotiate with them, um, to do some enhancements on the radio lane, depending on what we determine is the best solution. That's something we're gonna continue to work with train systems on. So that's, that's all good stuff, and I think that the impact of the school traffic in the area is what pushed us over the top on this project. Um, I I heard a lot in the governor's remarks about school safety. They actually did the event at a new school they're building. They're getting intersection improvements related to it, so that is clearly very high on their mind, and I think we're gonna continue to try to look at those areas on future project applications. So that gives us pretty much our work for twenty twenty two, which is to get that project done and all compliance, a lot to do with both the federal and state entities. As part of that, I have been asked to get some quotes from elected officials or whoever would like to speak um, about the project and the impact on our city, so if if that's something you want to be involved in, just get ahold of me. I need to get those to Tim Potter, whether we I'll come up with something if I need to. I've already given the the newspapers some quotes, but, um, I just want to let you know that, you know, persistent pays off. It took three tries, but we were able to get through the doors there, so. Also, um, if you haven't heard, the president did sign the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act yesterday. What does that mean for us? I don't think anyone quite knows yet, and there's obviously a lot of money that's gonna come down finally. If this is anything like the ARPA, it's gonna be months before we even have a clue what that might look like for local governments. But there is a large tranche of money that's going to be dispersed to K D O, right, from what I read, potentially in December. And that'll be divvied up among the states according to the current formula. So I would not be surprised if K D O quickly turns around and does another cost share round or expands the Ike Pipeline. We should hear in the next few weeks, um, on the update to the Ike Pipeline, if they will be looking at the Southwest Pipeline extension or not. Um, so we'll kind of, we're gonna need to stay flexible. I think there's gonna be a lot of opportunities for additional dollars coming in the next couple of years, so we need to get our master transportation plan done and identify those projects and get the citizen input that we need, so that we're ready to hit those opportunities when they arise. But just to give you an idea, they're talking about an eighty nine million dollar increase just in Kansas for highway funding, a forty five million dollar increase just for bridges, and this is annual, this is not just one time through the duration of the act, um, eight million dollars for electric vehicle infrastructure, and three point seven million dollars for world transit, for a total of a hundred forty five point seven million dollars in additional federal investment to the transportation system. That does not include the Amtrak stuff. That's a whole different pot of money. Hopefully, that will move forward, because that's really what's been needed to modernize the track, but it'll be up to Amtrak to kind of decide when they want to add that route. I'm sure the Heartland Flyer people are burning up the phones.
Sure.
To legislators, uh, that's another good piece of information for our community, but we'll just have to kind of see how that goes. I will tell you, um, the three things that K D O is telling us that are their priorities with this money, obviously, safety, preventing fatalities and accidents. Number two is reduce the transportation costs for people and goods, so I think we need to look strongly at economic development areas, um, whether it's the Street Economic Camp Act or other development areas that we think, um, you know, it's another one we can probably start kind of thinking about in that regard as well. And number three is, uh, infrastructure and innovation, but again, tied to economic growth, so. We're going to be thinking that way as we work on the plan, because we know that's ultimately what the dollars are gonna decide to. And in part, I just want to let you know, they have put out an alert that they are down twenty nine percent on Snoop operators for Region Five.
I read that.
For Kansas, so, uh, hopefully we don't have a harsh winter, but if you know someone that's for a job, they're desperate for anyone that can drive the cloud. I just wanted you guys to be aware of that, that like several are struggling to find people. But that was the only negative news I had to present, so, um, thank you again for your support and everything we're doing. I know we've been talking about North Columbus G for what, three years, feels like? And and it is. I might be letting the minister, the chairman, right, all the project Rosemary, get those tweaks, but hopefully by summer, they can be paving.
Yeah, I could like tell you'll start for first of the year.
Yeah, bids are still set to be let in March.
Okay.
I don't know if we moved up or not, but, you know, once that's, and then that can be proceeding, so we could have two or three major projects going next year. And I have put in a few more grant applications for the Central Trail, and we'll see what comes of those, but that one's probably for a long time, I'm sure. We do need to get the hike bike trail done, because the transportation alternatives window will open up next summer, and we need to have that thing going, because that was really the why they didn't give us any additional funding. They want that project off their books, so I think we're on track for it, right?
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Sean.
Appreciate it. Anything else from anyone?
Could be a term.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Thank you, guys.
Have a good.